Jim, Mr. Clerk, would you please do the things you do and take the role?
Okay, I will take the role. Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar.
Present participating from South Lansing.
Uh, councilmember Garza.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing.
Councilmember Speth for.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
And councilmember Wood.
A present participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
There are seven members present at Quorum, and Mr. President, if it's okay, I'd like to make a statement regarding the attendance.
Yes, please.
Um, as you are all aware, the city charter requires me to either hand deliver, uh, to, to deliver to you personally or to your home, the notice of a special meeting. Um, in the 15 years that I have been clerk, we've had, uh, probably around 20 special meetings. And, uh, I have done that for every special meeting. Um, however, with the meeting for today, I did run into an issue. Uh, when I went to councilmember Betts' house, the address that I have on file, the address that the human resources department has on file, uh, person came to the door and indicated that councilmember Betts no longer lives there. Um, so, uh, based on the advice of our city attorney, I did go back and leave the notice at that address of record. Um, but I do not have a valid address of record, uh, for councilmember Betts, and I wanted to make the council aware of that.
Okay. Thank you for your, your due diligence on that, Mr. Clerk.
Uh, can I add something here? The charter actually says usual place of, uh, residence. So I believe you're saying you made a good paid effort.
Yes.
Leave it at the usual place of residence of the council member.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I also do have a question about what, what magazines, in addition to the charter, Jim keeps on his coffee table in his living room. But I do see that Patricia Spitsy has a question. Councilmember Spitzley.
Get out of my head, Peter. I was thinking the same thing. No, um, so in seriously going back to the address thing though, because we've had a couple of people ask, is councilmember Betts still in the first ward? So do we have an obligation? I mean, how, what is, how does that work? I'm just asking.
No, councilmember Spitsy, I think that's, that's a fair question. Um, it, it's, it's not encompassed in this, uh, I think, Mr., the clerk was within his, uh, the purview of this meeting to at least let us know that he did his, his efforts to do it. We can explore that differently through the city attorney's office. Uh, we'll make a note of it and talk about it. But I do, I appreciate the clerk at least letting us know he made his, his best effort to, um, to alert all councilmembers of the special meeting. Okay, um, I, we are now on to meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anybody council wishes for us to keep in our thoughts this afternoon? All right, um, in general, just let's take a moment of, of reflection as we embark on this evening's business. Thank you. Um, next up, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, this is a special meeting, so it has a very limited agenda. Only those items that are on, uh, the agenda can be discussed. So we are at the point of speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, which does only include the item, uh, the second amendment to the stadium lease. So if there are any members of the public that wish to address city council on that topic, please raise your hand. Using star nine on a phone option Y on a Mac, alt Y on Windows or the, in the participant screen. Uh, there's a raise hand icon. And, uh, when the first speaker finishes, we will stop taking new additional speakers. Uh, I do see one hand so far. Uh, phone number ending in three, two, five. Go ahead. Three, two, five. I think you need to unmute.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Still new at this. Deb Parish from South Lansing. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to address the parking for the stadium before I could support the second amendment. I have serious concerns if Mayor Shore sells lot 49A and B for redevelopment. Before you accept this, think, where will the cars park? If concerts like the popular country artists play there, a lot of fans won't have any place to park. I don't believe that they will walk to the ramp half a mile away, especially in the dark. Also, there are not enough handicap parking spaces now for the stadium. So are you going to have a shuttle bus for them? That's just food for thought, but I do appreciate the time, um, I could speak. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. And for the record, I think that was Deb Parish, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Clerk.
Okay. All right. Uh, seeing no other hands, we are to counsel consideration of legislative matters. Uh, and the item at hand, the second amendment to the stadium lease.
All right, to get this properly before us, um, could I entertain a motion to approve the second amendment to the stadium lease, lease, uh, stadium license, lease and service agreement?
So moved.
By our vice president. All right. Is there, uh, for discussion tonight, how I'm going to start is I'm going to have, um, I, I think mayor, if you wanted to set the stage and then our attorneys and many, and Rob, I think were the, were the two primary presenters today. So, Mr. Mayor, uh, floor is yours. And then Lisa, if you're prepared to speak, and then I believe Mr. Witt again as well, there you are, is here, so.
Yeah, um, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, cool. I had problems with the mic before. Um, so in essence, they are legal and our finance folks, uh, got with TMO. They've got the lease drafted based on the resolution that you had before you. Uh, I believe Lisa has been able to, to even work on a line by line, so they can go through with you, uh, all of the changes. I know that, uh, she got to you, the, the lease, uh, that was agreed to by TMO yesterday. Uh, the line by line might have been this morning. Uh, so realistically, they can go through it with you. They can go through, I think they went through the numbers, uh, a few days ago, but I'm sure they can, um, reiterate the numbers. Uh, Rob's got that. I know Brian Lefler is, is on the phone as well, uh, or, uh, on the Zoom as well. So I think really it's just a matter of going through the, the, the changes and then entertaining questions.
All right, Lisa, why don't you go ahead and start?
Mr. President, hang in, can I?
Jim, go for it. Yep.
I just want to, uh, and I'm going to embarrass Lisa, um, but I called her a superstar. She has put so much effort into this complicated, complex transaction over the last 40 days. I just want to acknowledge that for all of you. Okay? You got a great addition to your council staff and legal representation up there.
I would agree. Thank you, Jim. Superstar, you're, it's, you're, you have the floor.
Okay, well, thank you. And Jimmy, you were right, that did embarrass me, but we'll, we'll continue on and soldier forward. Um, I think the, the way that makes most sense to me to go through this is I have provided to this council, um, as the mayor indicated, um, the lease, the second amendment to the stadium license, lease and service agreement, which contains all of the legalese and the changes and the substance of the agreement that, um, it is being requested that this council approve. However, I also provided, um, I think because it is a good visual aid of what the changes are, a markup of both the 2014 stadium lease agreement and the first amendment. So, um, I'm just going to go through them one by one on, uh, the second amendment, just going down. And I think unless the council president objects, if there are questions, I think we can take them at that time so that we're not going forward and backward and kind of confusing ourselves.
Yeah, I think that's great. Lisa, do you have the document you're able to put on screen or should I ask Sheri to do it? Which one, uh, would make the most sense?
I do have the document. I, um, believe I saved it to my desktop earlier today, so I can likely share the screen. Give me one second to try.
I think we've got the permissions for you, so yep, you can share. That might make the most sense. And then folks, make sure to use the raise hand function too, because I'll be watching the participant screen, but I won't be able to see all of your faces.
Okay, please just bear with me one minute. I have to open the documents and my little window is blocking it.
Glad to see no one showed up as a cat today.
I was really thinking about it, but then Jim called me a superstar, so I thought I'd be professional. Okay, so can everybody see what I have up on my screen, which is the stadium lease license and service agreement from 2014? Okay, so the first change in the agreement, um, is on page one, it's in the recitals. So we are changing what used to be, um, TM, TMO owning a single class base, high, single A baseball club. Um, they are now a high A baseball club based on the, um, the determination of the major league baseball organization. As we continue through the recitals, I have changed, um, the end year of this agreement to extend this license, lease and service agreement for years, so it will end 2038. So then the next change is in article two, which is the definition section. Um, so this change extends the definition of what the Midwest, um, its successors and assigns, including but not limited to whatever league replaces the Midwest league as a result of the professional development license, um, between MLB and TMO. Another definitional change is to national association. It's essentially the same. We're extending it to, um, national association, including the successors and assigns of the national association of professional baseball. Here in section AJ, we are proposing that it would essentially, um, be deleted and that in its place would be a definition of professional baseball agreement league license, which is known throughout this agreement as a PDL, and it's the written license entered into between MLB and a minor league team. So in this case, TMO. So then getting in to article three, which is the term intermination. Um, this new agreement will run for a term of 24 years total. Um, and then it ends in 2038, as we discussed briefly in the recitals. The next change is, um, down here indicating that the city shall have the right to terminate the agreement by providing written notice to TMO at any time if TMO fails to conduct.
Lisa, I have a question from councilmember Wood. I'm sorry. Councilmember Wood?
No, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, thank you. Um, actually, I wanted to go back when we keep talking about between TMO and MLB. Um, so is it my understanding that this lease agreement is in conjunction with the MLB? So if they make requirements upon us, we would have to follow whatever requirements they are imposing?
Um, I believe I know the answer to that. I might defer to somebody on the TMO side of things, um, to sort of explain the relationship a bit better. But I do know that the MLB as part of their PDL is requiring things like stadium improvements, um, to which we are required, you know, to do in order to continue to, to have the team here in Lansing.
Before I, yeah, there's someone on TMO that looks like they're going to raise their hand. So, uh, if CDTV could bring in Mr. Nussbaum, the question I would have to add to that, councilmember Wood and Lisa, they can't mandate something on us that isn't in this lease, so we'd have to renegotiate the lease if the, if the mandates change. Is that correct?
I think, um, perhaps Mr. Nussbaum could to speak to exactly what the mandates would be and how it would affect an agreement like this. It's my understanding that this would be the lease that we are moving forward with until 2038.
Okay. I'm going to do my best to follow the All-Star. To answer councilmember Wood's question, um, the city of Lansing will not be required to do anything Major League Baseball says to do. Unless it's in the agreement you have with TMO. In other words, Major League Baseball is not a party to this agreement. And part of the strategy here is to keep it that way so that they could not come in and dictate things directly to the city. Uh, but as Lisa said, there are certain improvements that they are requiring that are part of the current lease. So that is why the city is, is doing those. If they have come up with other requirements that are not part of your lease with TMO, then the city would not be required to do it.
Oh, in essence, what you're saying is next year, if they were to say we had to replace all the seating because it didn't meet their requirements, you're saying that that would not be something we'd have to do.
If it's not, if it's not in your lease, no. And I think it's important to note that this professional development license is an extensive document, which does contain, um, a lot of, um, specifications as it relates to what the facility needs to have. And, um, it is highly unlikely that that document is going to be changed anytime soon. So I would not expect that there would be any more requirements in the near future. The ones that they're asking to do now are going to take, um, effect over the next three years. So I, I would say it's highly unlikely that the city or the, or, actually, it's TMO. The TMO would be required to do other things than what they've been required to do as of this date for the, for the foreseeable future.
Okay, just so I'm clear, you're saying highly unlikely. You are not guaranteeing that there will not be changes.
I can't guarantee, I can't make a statement. I mean, I, I've been involved in this business for a long time. I think I can speak with some degree of authority, but I know I can't speak with ultimate authority.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. President, if I might add, um, maybe there's two parts to that question. One is, do they have a legal, legal standing in this agreement? Under the terms of this agreement, the answer is no. It's between TMO and the city. Will they be able to bring pressure for some reason in the future? That's always a possibility.
Okay, but there's nothing in our lease that says we have to do anything. Right, the, 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 okay. Um, councilmember Dunbar, do you have a question or are we going to?
I was, I was just going to, um, sort of state that that, what they're asking right now, MLB is asking right now, is not unique to the city. Every single team that they're bringing under their wing, now that they're, they're overseeing the operation of minor league baseball, every one of them has to have a women's locker room. Every one of them has to be switched over to LED lights and everyone has to have two batting cages. Very few of them actually met that requirement, so every city is, is going through this capital improvement right now.
Thank you. So, uh, Mr. Keith and then Mr. Nussbaum.
Yeah, I'll just add to what, um, councilmember Dunbar, um, stated. We reviewed, so they put together a analysis of all the items that a stadium must have. And then there's a, a point system, and you have to fall within so many points in order to stay on what I'll call the nice list before you get put on the naughty list once you hit a certain point. We reviewed that, uh, list and determined, you know, what things we fell within, what things we were borderline on. And then based on that, put together this list of improvements that would need to be made that would keep us within the parameters of what Major League Baseball deemed, because nobody's going to be at zero points. You want to be at the least points possible. And, um, the biggest items, points wise, we put into this capital improvement list as being the, the, the things we need to hit. Are there things that we may still get points on? Yes, but they were not, you know, critical. Um, you know, they, they, they may add, your, your equipment room had to be so many square feet and we might've been 20 square feet short. We probably won't get any points on that, but they could. Um, so just, we, we're reviewing it to make sure that there's nothing that we see will be, um, on the list anytime in the foreseeable future.
When I was, I would hope that as we look at CIP projects that we're obligated to make, that you're, that you're with having those in mind. So we're not looking at redoing this lease again in a few years, but, Mr. Nussbaum, if there's anything to add to that, otherwise I'll have Lisa move on.
Uh, very, very quickly, uh, I, I tried to make this point the other night, but I think you all in the council ought to be aware that the stadium you have in existence right now is an elite stadium. In other words, it's one of the best in the country. I've been to a lot of stadiums. Um, this is not a stadium that Major League Baseball is going to be particularly concerned about once the, once those things that we were, we've just been talking about are done. So I, and, and you're at that point because you build a good stadium and then you maintain it really well.
Thank you. Lisa?
Okay, so, um, as I was saying, the seventh change, number seven, on the second amendment, is changing, um, the minimum number of TMO home baseball games required each season. So it's either a minimum of 55 games per season or the maximum number of home baseball games permitted by that MLB PDL. Uh, number eight is, um, one of the big changes. This is to the CIP payments, minimum and maximum for the course of the agreement. Um, so in front of you, you have the full, it's not going to fit on one screen here. But this change in this schedule of payment outlines the new CIP minimum and maximum through the end of 2038.
Lisa, I have a question for you. Is the rationale behind zeros for 21 and 22 because we're helping with the, the large capital investment of 1.25 million dollars?
I believe that is part of the rationale of why that changed to the CIP. So we're making improvements, um, for the 1.25 million, so not so much is needed for the day-to-day CIP items.
Very good. And then I see councilmember Spitzley has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. So educate me and others who might be watching. What, what was our responsibilities for CIP under the, um, contract before we started the amendments?
And sure, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember, um, okay. Um, so the, the items that I have crossed out here that you see on the screen, these are the current requirements under the, the 2014, 2014 agreement. This is what we are bound, um, to do if this agreement is not changed. So it'd be the 50, 75 until 2021, and then the 7,500, and so on and so forth.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, did you have another question? I know I interrupted you.
And I totally forgot it, so, but that was good. Thank you. It's fine.
Excellent tactic. Keep moving.
Um, also, uh, change that was made to this section is the original agreement contemplated a jointly funded and commissioned facility study of the stadium to determine repairs and upgrades that were necessary. That was, um, in the original agreement to take place in 2025. Um, the amendment changes that to 2026 partly because of the CIP improvements that are going to be made over the next couple of years. And just clarifies that jointly funded means a 50-50 split between the parties in regards to who is going to pay for that facility study. Okay, so rather than, so the ninth change, number nine here is in article five, which is, um, titled TMO obligations. Um, again, this is a change that you saw earlier. Um, so the minimum number of games is either going to be 55 or the maximum number that MLB permits for home baseball games.
No, no indication, how many have to be a thirsty Thursday, though, right?
My favorites are the dollar hot dog nights. Those are, those are the way to go. Um, so the next change is still in the TMO obligations. This, uh, addition just indicates, um, the exhibit B is the stadium operations plan. And it kind of outlines the requirements, um, of the stadium. And so this just, uh, has a provision that TMO, uh, is required to make sure that that exhibit B is kept up to date with any changes that are required by that PDF. So the, um, number 11 on the second amendment is a change to the naming rights agreement. Um, the current agreement that I have that's crossed out here is because when we drafted this in 2014, there was a naming rights agreement with Cooley Law School at the time. Um, and then it spoke to, in the event that that agreement with Cooley ended, what the split would be, which is, uh, split 50-50, the gross revenue less the cost to execute the package. Um, that is what we're under now at this time, since we have an agreement, or I'm sorry, TMO and the city have an agreement with Jackson National Life Insurance. So we're currently splitting that, that, um, 50-50, less the cost to execute the package. Um, the change, the significant change in this section is that, uh, TMO is guaranteeing a minimum of $150,000 per year. Um, should the current agreement with Jackson National end, and there's a new agreement with some other entity that they are, uh, looking to enter into. And again, that's a minimum of $150,000 per year, or it's exactly how it is now, 50-50, split the gross revenue less the cost to execute the package, not including marketing and sales costs. And the next change is down in article nine. It is to the scheduling article. So the second amendment proposes that we add the phrase, which shall, shall be subject to any requirements of a PDL to the scheduling, um, just because the, the MLB PDL is going to be working with the schedule and we don't really know exactly what that means, so we're just covering on there.
Ring your bases.
Covering, oh, that's, strike one for me.
I won't call foul on you. It's fine.
Okay, am I going to have to separate you two? Because I will.
Bring us home. Bring us home, Lisa. Bring us home.
The yellow card on councilmember Dunbar. The way you're on sport. Right field, though.
Yes, that's true. Um, the next change, uh, number 13 on the second amendment is to the advertising article. Um, so this phrase or this statement is just a general acknowledgement that there is a PDL that's going to be between TMO and MLB, and there will be advertising, um, described in that agreement. So TMO is agreeing to take reasonable steps to, one, assist the city in complying with any PDL restrictions, and two, take reasonable steps to maximize its advertising revenue under the restriction of the TMO PDL. Okay, so the next change is here um, in the financial terms. Um, in the license fee section, there is a long discussion that's in the agreement now and will maintain to be in the agreement as to what DGR is and what the split is, so on and so forth. This change, uh, so from 2021 to 2031, DGR shall not include the advertising revenue generated from all sources at the stadium on um, or on the outfield development parcel during the day of a TMO home baseball game. And then beginning in 2032, that will re-enter the, the formula of what is DGR comprised of.
I have a question on that one. Why? Is, is really kind of the, what's the, what's the rationale behind why we would exclude that from the DGR calculation for 10 years? I see, I see the financials still put us in the black, so I'm less concerned about that. But why, why is that a consideration in this component versus?
Sure. I'm gonna go ahead and if I can, turn it to finance and the finance director, Mr. Whit again to, um, he is abundantly familiar with, you know, the concessions we made versus, you know, for these things and how it worked. So I think he has a very good understanding.
Mr. Whit again.
Thank you. Um, so overall, that was, you know, part of the, the back and forth discussions um, with TMO and the city uh, regarding overall savings uh, uh, with both, with both parties.
Okay, it was just a unbalanced decision?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I see in order, Councilmembers Dunbar, Spitzley and Wood. Dunbar, Kathy, Councilmember Dunbar, excuse me.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, if you remember, and we're not even looking at this, the original second amendment to this, what um, TMO had proposed was a flat rate, a flat instead of DGR. So when we got them back into the DGR component, um, we were still looking at, you know, they, they have short-term cash flow issues.
Okay.
Because of the season not working last year. And because we were saving, you know, they, they were the ones that suggested, can we cut the CIP requirements because of what's being invested with the 1.25? And originally they had asked for a waiver of all, the 5% of all through the end of the contract. I didn't think that was, um, I, I went with 10 years. I, I opted to go with 10 years as opposed to the entire time. And I think that they still got us to, everybody gets in a better position. Um, because of it, we all saved some money in the short term, um, and it came out a wash.
Okay, so the parties all agreed that that was a better route to go than the flat fees. Is that right, Mr. Whit again?
Sorry, I was muted. Yeah, yeah.
Very good. Uh, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So during this 10-year period where um, the advertising revenue generated is not going to be included, we're also um, having them pay us back the 150,000, I think, $10,000 over 10 years instead of paying us one lump sum payment. Is that correct?
Sorry, I'm just kind of taking a correct um, at a correct.
Well, it's kind of a, those are, those are two incentives that we've given them that, you know, are a significant amount of money that kind of go against the City of Lansing.
I, I will know, um, I, I should have clarified, Councilmember, that it's a 10-year period beginning at 2021, also at a rate of 2.35%.
Okay.
Council, Councilmember Wood?
Uh, Rob, can you tell us what that equates to in dollar, what the projected dollar amount was for this clause?
For the, for the uh, 125?
No, I understand the 125. I'm talking about the clause that we're in right now that we're discussing that, that is the advertising revenue um, portion. You must have had a dollar figure attached to that. What is the dollar figure?
Uh, trying to look that up. It averaged, uh, and Tyler from TMO, correct me if I'm wrong here, it averaged about 38,000 a year, correct? I believe.
I don't think Mr. Parsons is on here. Hold on.
Sorry about that. I, I can only see five of you at a time. I didn't know he was on.
Yeah, he's, um, let me.
Councilmember Wood, it'd be about 38K a year unless Tyler.
That's correct. If you guys can hear me to average.
Okay, thank you.
Good here.
Yeah, so I think City TV pulled him as a, as a panelist, but um, so Tyler, if you, if you can hear me now. There you are. 38,000 a year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Vice President?
Yeah, just very quickly, could we pull over our internal auditor as a panelist? I had a, a series of conversations with him um, today, and I thought that number was higher. I just want him to confirm for us that it is in fact 38.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Brewer? Yeah. Just a minute. Can I drag him into the room? There you are. Mr. Brewer, could you please, if you didn't hear Vice President Hussein's question, if not, go ahead, please answer.
Uh, yeah, I haven't verified that information. Uh, I was told it was between 50 and 60, but like I said, is that 38 probably is more representative of that number. Um, I, I do, do want to point out that the, the minimum guaranteed payment was 350, uh, and that hadn't changed. So like I said, is, uh, you're, are making a concession, losing that revenue. But uh, like I said, as long as the payment is greater than, you're basically losing the money over the 350 is what you're doing. Um, and in the calculation, like you were saying, uh, it's all in the black and we underestimated the revenue uh, within the calculation. So um, take that into consideration.
Mr. Vice President, is that addressed here? The discrepancies, what you heard and what you thought?
Yeah, I'm good for now.
Okay. Thank you. Lisa, if you'd like to move on?
Sure. Um, so moving to the next paragraph. Um, this is the 2020 season was canceled. And accordingly, the license fee for that year is waived by the city. So this is the 350,000 minimum payment that is being waived for the 2020 season um, due to that force majeure event, which is obviously um, a disputed amount by the parties. But this is the, the, the negotiation that we ended up at.
Uh, Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just for my clarification, in addition to the advertising revenue and then the 150,000 being paid over 10 years with 2.8% or whatever the financing, we're also waiving the $350,000 um, fee for the, for 2020. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, that's the force majeure clause, right?
Yes, that's correct. I would note, Councilmember Spitzley, it's uh, $125,000 over the 10 years.
Thank you.
Um, at 2.35.
I'm sorry for answering, Councilmember Spitzley. I heard a question and just answered it. So my bad. Councilmember Dunbar, do you have a question? Or you have a question?
No, I was just going to point out, we, when we talk about the concessions, I would say that the two concessions that affect the revenue line are the 5% for 10 years on the advertising GGR and the waiver of that lease. The 125, we're gonna get paid back and we're gonna get paid more than we would have gotten paid this year. We're just giving them time to do it. So the city makes off better on the interest on that one. Um, the other thing is, and Lisa, maybe you can speak to this. This, the force majeure clause was actually being, um, it could have been litigated. There is, there is argument on the city's side that we're owed that money. There's argument on TMO's side that they don't owe that money. And if it had gone to court, we would have paid money in order to figure that out. So just, it made sense to wipe that clean in this agreement um, to get us to the place where it was financially beneficial for both sides and we didn't have to go to court.
Well, I don't, I don't know if it makes, it, it made sense to do that. Um, again, and I'm just gonna say it again, you know, we're giving them a concession for the COVID-19 pandemic. And I know that the mayor um, correctly noted that we are providing some assistance to small business. But I, I don't believe that any small business is getting such a large concession as we're giving them. So it is, you know, I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. President?
Yes, Jim?
I don't want to get overly technical here, but we've been throwing the term force majeure around a lot. Uh, and it is force majeure. Force majeure really deals, deals with timing. There's another clause in there that they claimed through their attorney early on. It's called the destruction of stadium clause, which has language in there that might constitute destruction of stadium. Anyway, they had a just, just a little claim and that's what's being settled in here.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
Um, I'm gonna continue on to number 15 on the second amendment. Um, this is down in the audit section of this article. Number eight here. Okay, so first of all, um, this agreement adds in specifically uh, city council's internal auditor as an individual who has the ability to review documents, uh, financial documents related to the TMO home baseball games revenue, um, food and beverage concession, concessions, that type of material.
Now that we have one, that's, that's great.
Uh, the next change is in the audit provision. Um, so this change, addition to the agreement uh, indicates that TMO shall provide to the city attorney or its designee a copy of all internal financial statements and/or audits created by or for TMO. Uh, that materially is noted to be confidential per MCL 15.243 sub F. That is FOIA. And the subsection there is the, the financial trade secret, financial documents. Um, and so they shall provide it to the city within 10 business days, but not later than March 1st each calendar year of receiving such financial statements and/or audits. And then the last change, number 16, this is the last change to the 2014 agreement. And then we get to jump into the First Amendment. Um, so the last change here again, um, includes that language that changes the minimum required number of baseball games needed per season. So it's either 55 or the maximum number permitted by MLB pursuant to a PDL. And that uh, clarifies that those games will be played at the stadium each calendar year. If there are no other questions on the 2014 agreement, I am happy to jump into the First Amendment.
I see one question, I see one hand from Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thanks. Lisa, if you don't mind, could you scroll up just really quick to the um, capital improvement strikeout section, starting at 2021 and down? I saw the top part really well. I just want to see after 2021.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm sorry that you gotta scroll like that. I thought it would have been.
You know, I, yeah, I could use the, the page number, but you know, I feel like this is just more interesting for all of us. Okay, here we go. So Councilmember Jackson, you were looking, you were liking to see after 2021?
Right, and so a little, yeah, scroll down for me a little lower.
Okay. So this is 2015 to 2017, and then 18, 21, 22, 24, and then 25 until the end.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions on this document?
Doesn't appear so, no.
Okay, so I'm jumping right in. Um, so this is the First Amendment to the Stadium License, Lease and Service Agreement. Uh, this was executed July 15th, 2014. So the first change in this agreement is in Article One, which is the recitals. So the additional cash payment that is required, I guess, let me back up briefly. The First Amendment was entered into because there was some additional financing that was required for improvements of the stadium and the outfield parcel. Um, and so this agreement indicated that there would be additional financing. And for that additional financing, TMO would make an additional cash payment to the city each year. That amount is one-half the additional principal and interest, not to exceed uh, $125,000 uh, each calendar year. In the new agreement, um, this changes slightly. Um, that not to exceed $125,000 is, is going to be taken out. And they, TMO has agreed to pay the one-half, the additional principal and interest on the additional financing. And that is going to be due to a refinancing of the city's IPA, the 2015 IPA. Um, specific questions about that, I will obviously defer to finance. So the next change, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I just was verifying there were no questions. I don't see any hands, so I will not belabor it.
So, uh, the proposed second amendment also adds a recital to this. Um, it indicates that the city shall enter into an installment purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed 1.25 million to provide additional financing for stadium improvements as required by the TMO PDL. So those changes, specific changes have been discussed, but those are the women's locker room, the extra batting something. And so on and so.
Batting tunnel.
Thank, yeah, a yellow card for me.
Councilmember Wood?
Uh, thank you, President Spatafor. There is no requirement that we uh, refinance the original debt on top of adding the 1.25, is there?
There is. Uh, we'll get to it here in just a, just a minute.
All right.
Um, but there is a requirement that that amount be refinanced.
All right, thank you. I'll wait.
Lisa, if you're sharing this, if you're sharing the amendment, it's, we're still on the CIP page. Or if, if you're not, we can just stop the screen share, but.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I think, let me stop the share and then start over.
Okay.
Uh, with the new document. Better?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies. I was just scrolling on through. I thought everybody had it. Um, so this, we're now in Article Three, the additional cash payment. The first change to Article Three is we are taking out um, in the event that the city does not obtain additional financing for any reason, um, that this amendment shall be considered null and void. Uh, the city already obtained additional financing, so this is a bit redundant, and so we are taking it up. The next change is to uh, that additional cash payment, the 2020 additional cash payment. This is the, the information that Councilmember Spitzley was referring to earlier. So for the year 2020, TMO owes $125,000 for their additional cash payment required under the First Amendment. Um, we are allowing a payment over a 10-year period at annual uh, 2.5, 2.35% interest beginning in 2021. We are also adding um, Provision H here, which indicates that uh, the terms for the additional PDL financing, which you'll see.
I've been trying to raise my hand.
Really?
On mute myself, and I, I just need a question to go back to that. I apologize, President.
Yeah, sure. Let me just scroll back up.
Sorry, I had zoned out. I was reading the text, Councilmember Spitzley.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so are we not getting? Okay, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so are we not getting? Let me, are we, so we're not getting the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment for twenty twenty? I got that. So how, what does that do to any type of budgeting for Lepfa or for the stadium?
Okay, I'm gonna just pause right there. The, the payment that we are waiving is the three hundred and fifty minimum guaranteed payment under the license fee.
Okay.
So each year, the, the revenue, TMO is required to pay the license fee and the additional cash payment under this First Amendment.
Right.
So we're waiving the license fee. We're maintaining that they owe one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the additional cash payment. But we're allowing that payment to come in over a ten-year period of time with that interest. As it relates to specific budget items, that is a question that I would defer to Lepfa and finance.
I mean, that's a significant, because it's a significant amount of money. So I'm wondering how, how does that fold into your overall bottom line for budgeting?
Mr. Whittaker, did you want to? No, somewhere there's a spreadsheet. Or Jake, or I see Jake has turned his screen on.
Sorry, I'm looking at spreadsheets. Jake, if you want to take the budget question and.
Yeah, so the short answer is we'll have to eventually amend our budget to account for the fact that instead of receiving it immediately in this current fiscal year, we'd be spreading that hundred twenty-five thousand over the course of the following number of years. And so overall, the net impact is we'll receive all that money over the course of the agreement. In the current year, that will be a small loss that we'll have to make up.
I can jump in, but, and Jake is as accurate, we'll also have a reduced minimum that we have to pay, so we'll have to factor that in as well. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, and we'll also have to factor in an increase to the naming rights.
That's right. So there are several factors that need to be calculated. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, Councilmember Wood, I see you had a question. I saw Mr. Lefler had his hand up in response to the first question. So Mr. Lefler, you're now a participant, if you'd like to address that.
No, Mr. Brower answered the question.
Oh, very good. Okay, Councilmember Wood.
Oh, what we're going to receive from TMO is an additional twelve thousand five hundred dollars a year for the next ten years and a two point three five percent interest rate, correct?
Correct.
The twelve thousand five hundred.
No, the, the two point three five percent on the, the one, one hundred, one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
So they're, so they're paying, they're paying twelve thousand five hundred a year, but there's going to be interest on that as well then.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, but the interest is on if the interest is on the, the hundred and twenty-five thousand and we're getting payments of twelve thousand five hundred per year, then I would assume that the interest would be, each year would be calculated on that twelve thousand five hundred.
Peter, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Kathy, since no one else seems to want to answer the question.
That's okay. In the comparison analysis spreadsheet that was sent out, there's, there's that huge long spreadsheet. You got to scroll all the way back left and right to see it. I needed two screens, but in column G two, it discusses the one point, the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and, and the payments are actually listed in there. And there's also a debt service summary, so you can see the interest payments on a different tab. But the way that those payments work, it's interest only the first year and then it's fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year all the way through to the end and there's a fiscal year split, but we will be.
Just what I said.
Yeah, we're making a hundred and forty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars at the end.
Making an additional twenty-seven thousand dollars for.
Sixteen.
It's about sixteen, Councilmember.
All right, so just so that we keep hearing that we're making all this money, I just want clarification that what, ten years from now, that additional dollars, fourteen thousand dollars will be, is not the same as what it is today.
Mr. Lefler?
Yes, sir.
Oh, your hand was up still. I didn't know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't.
Okay, very good. Are we all clear on the, the refinancing of the, the, the additional cash payment? Okay, Lisa, please continue.
Sure. So the Second Amendment proposes in addition, item H, indicating that the additional PDL financing, which is noted in subsection I there, and we'll get to in just one second. Those terms are going to be in the city's sole and absolute discretion. In addition, the city may use an alternative financing vehicle to provide that additional PDL financing if it is financially beneficial. And then subsection I here is the city refinancing the principal balance of approximately three million dollars on the installment purchase agreement for the additional financing. So consistent with the recitals, TMO would make that additional cash payment to the city of one half the principal and interest on the additional financing. They also will pay one hundred percent of the actual final debt service associated with any termination fees or cost of issuance related to the refinancing. And then the payment, it just gives the payment schedule there in that last sentence.
Carol, Councilmember Wood, excuse me.
I have a problem. So Mr. Lefler's fee that he'll get for this will be paid for by TMOS, by TMZ, TO whatever.
TMO.
Not TMZ, Carol.
TMI, everyone.
Is that, is that what I'm hearing, Lisa?
I, I would defer to finance on an analysis about where his fee is coming from. This provision indicates that TMO is paying the, the debt service service associated with the termination fees from the bank one hundred percent. So if there's something from finance on that.
Is there anyone from finance or?
I don't know. Jake and I might be able to handle that, but, but the, the fees, you know, as municipal advisor or obviously we, the city will have to use bond counsel for, for going out for, for refinancing or IPAs, they do come out of the issuance price. If that answers your question. There's not like a check written from general fund.
What, what I'm reading here, it says, or cost of issuance related to the refinancing. So whether, okay, so any costs related to that will be paid by TMO. Is that correct?
Correct, Councilmember, yep.
All right, thank you.
That's why we're done. Okay, moving on.
Well, I'm happy to report that that was the last change to the First Amendment. And so that reflects all the provisions that you see in the Second Amendment. So we've gone through all of the the items. I can stop sharing the screen now if you'd like, or I can pull up something specific if there's somebody, something that someone would like to see.
First, let me ask folks, is there anything you need to see in either of the documents before we move on to this general discussion? Or at least it appears we are done looking at your screen. So if you want to stop the share, please do. Okay, folks, that was it, I think, in terms of the presentation. I know I'll just start by saying I really appreciate everybody's indulgence in this meeting. I, I had a ton of questions that I sent over this afternoon and before this meeting, I had answers and was able to read them. So I very much appreciate that for everyone who put their work in on that. And I will open it up to the council to discuss. We do have a motion before us to approve what is, what we've just been discussing, but obviously there's deliberation that needs to take place. Here we are. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. In, there was a really good question earlier about like how the savings is reflected on our side versus their side.
Kathy, you gotta hold your, gotta keep your unmute.
Okay, let me try that. Did you hear anything I just said?
There was a good question and that was it.
Yes, okay. So there was a very good question earlier about like the amount of money that we're saving that we've been hearing that the city is going to save money. The savings that are.
Kathy?
Okay, you know, seriously, I can't scroll off of Zoom onto this other document, so I'm just going to do this off the top of my head then, because if I'm trying to look at the document and speak, I don't, I don't get to do that. So my understanding, and I'm, and I know that the numbers back this up when you look at this, the savings that we and TMO see primarily from the original agreement come from the switch of LED lights. Like the electric bill is going to get cut by half and it's a hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars every year that they spend there. So that, that utility bill is split both ways by us and TMO. So across the board, that's where the savings comes from. So that, that mandatory one point two five that comes in here, yes, we have to pay it because we own the stadium, but that's what's going to generate the utility savings. The other savings that flip back and forth, we, when we negotiated the, the reduction in the CIP payments based on what's in the current agreement now and what we will be paying if we pass this, we save nine hundred thousand dollars over the length of this lease on CIP. And that, that is reflected on the TMO side, because we were looking for ways to reduce on both sides and come out ahead. That three fifty that we are proposing to forgive for last year and at the most, like, like what, what Tyler had said, that we, we anticipated thirty-eight thousand dollars. We don't know what the ballpark outfield advertising is going to be. It is only one of several different ways that the DGR is calculated. So we're still going to get the DGR and the ticket prices, the concessions. We're still going to get the naming rights split. There's a couple of other things in there that we get. They just asked for the five percent on the sponsorships that go on the wall. And at the high end estimating, and I rounded up to fifty, I just said, okay, let's, let's pretend it's fifty over the next ten, eleven years, whatever, that's five hundred thousand dollars. So three fifty that we save from this year and the five fifty over that time ends up being around nine hundred. So we, we negotiated equal savings on both sides. And then we also mutually benefit from the electrical. That's, that's in a nutshell the change of how the finances come to be in this situation versus the old agreement.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza?
Thank you, Council President. So I appreciate you giving that summary, Councilwoman Dunbar. I just want to, I guess, reiterate kind of what you said, make sure I'm understanding this. So I understand that we're extending our contract. The cash flow savings is one of the savings options by extending and reducing the rate by point nine five percent. So just almost a one percent reducing of the, of our interest rate. We're saving money by reducing the capital improvement. And we're also saving, which you said, which I understand, the largest savings of all is the utility cost reduction by switching from to the LED lights. Now, I guess my question is that, that one point two million dollars of the new financing, does that cover the installation of the new lights? You know, who's on the hook for the new lights? Okay, that is. Okay, that's my understanding. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Hey. Well, as much as I love making meetings last longer, it appears that we have punched ourselves out on questions. And there is a proper motion before the council. So seeing no further discussion from the council, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll on whatever it is in front of, oh, Councilmember Spitzley is going to just couldn't help yourself.
I know. How many votes do we need to pass this?
A majority, five.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember, Vice President's got a question.
Just very quickly, before we actually vote, I want to, I want, you know, we've given everybody pats on the back and that's fantastic, but I did want to recognize our internal auditor. Had it not been for him, we were sold that that initial second agreement was a cost neutral deal and the reality is it was not, and a lot of people missed that. And so if it was not for Eric Brewer, other folks would not have been, you know, have been spurred into action essentially. And we would not be here today, considering a deal that looks to be, again, we've been crunching numbers all afternoon, which looks to be a, a much better deal for the city. Where, and it's also a great deal still for TMO. So I just wanted to, I didn't want the, the moment to pass without acknowledging Eric and all of his, his fantastic work on this.
Yes, thank you, Eric. I have observed a lot of data and the information you sent us over the last couple of days. Very much appreciate it. And, and I do, I know Jim kind of embarrassed Lisa at the beginning, but Lisa has been phenomenal in getting the information to us and, and juggling all of her responsibilities that come with a lot of the things this council is dealing with over the next week and last couple of weeks. So I really appreciate Lisa and the work she's done on this specifically, but in general. So, Mr. Jackson, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So I'm inclined to support this. I guess I was just wondering if any council people had, or anybody was against it and wanted to kind of like share their thoughts just because, you know, the number, I mean, recently I was working hard this afternoon on a few different things. I just want to hear if there's any opposition out there.
Well, I call for any further discussion and I don't see any, so I think we're ready to call the roll.
Mr. Clerk.
On the resolution, Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Now.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes, sir.
Six years, one day, the resolution is adopted. And that being our only item for action, we are to motion of excuse absence.
There are motion to excuse absent council members? Motion made by Councilmember Jackson.
Move to excuse Councilman Betts because one, he asked for it, two, we know that notice wasn't delivered and that he might be in Alaska. And three, we really don't know what's going on with him at all and how he's doing and I would just move to excuse him.
Okay, on the excuse, Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
Now.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
No.
Councilmember Hussein.
No.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Three A's, four N's, the motion is not passed. And we are two remarks by council members.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to address the body? Mr. Mayor, I smell steak fajitas in my kitchen, so I would encourage you, if you have remarks, to make them quick.
I just want to thank, I just want to thank everybody for your, your analysis, the time that you took. Eric Brewer, Lisa Hagan, Jim Smurka, Rob Whittaker, Brian Lefler, everybody really did a thorough job. I apologize for the last minute, but I think we did a really good thing today for, for the city, for our stadium district, for our team. So I do want to thank everybody for all your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clerk, I think that concludes the business for the council. So at five forty PM, this special meeting in Lansing City Council is adjourned.